Field Public Schools School Committee Meeting for Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. I call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A, Section 20. This meeting is being recorded by GCTV. I think, Nick, I was supposed to tell you to unmute. Hopefully, you've done that. Please unmute for us. Nick from GCTV. Is anyone else recording besides GCTV? Okay. So can I have Member Johnson, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Sure. Member Karen?
Here. Sorry.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Here.
Member Hollins is absent. Secretary Johnson, I'm here. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Here.
Unless, Member Hollins, did you arrive since we started? All right. That's our roll call.
Okay. Thank you. So moving on to the next item, approval of draft minutes. We have one, two, three, four, five to approve. We're gonna do them. I would, uh, or I kinda wanna do them as a group, but we'll do them individually just in case there are corrections. So let's start with January 27th. That was a special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 27?
So moved.
And a second?
Second. Weedegardner?
That was Katie and the mayor. And any discussion? Hearing none? Oh, yes. Was that discussion? No. Okay. Hearing none? We'll need a roll call vote to approve.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Yes.
And still no Member Hollins. Is that correct? Okay. So Glenn, we're good? That one passes?
That passes.
Okay. Moving on to February 12th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
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 So we've got Katie, Member Karen, and Member Wall on the tag team there. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? Not arrived. Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Yeah.
Okay. That passes. Moving on to, uh, where were we? March 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes from the special meeting and budget hearing?
So moved. Weedegardner?
And a second from Member Wall. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Let's have a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? Still not here. Secretary Johnson, here. Chair Poiety? Yeah, me, yes. Chair Poiety, yes. Okay. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Yes.
Okay. That one passes. We only got two more guys. You're doing great. March 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? March 16th?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. So that was the mayor and Member Karen, I believe. And any discussion?
No. No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Member Ekstrom?
Any discussion?
Ekstrom and Karen.
I hear no discussion. Let's have a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? Still not here. Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Wonderful. We are on to the last one. March 24th, 2020, special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
Did you put us on speaker?
No, I had to let the dog in.
All right.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's move to a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? Still not here. Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Abstain. I was not present.
Okay. The motion carries with five yeses, one abstain, and one absent.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys. That was tedious, I know. I appreciate that.
This is an introduction from Susan Barber. Member Karen made that the motion to approve March 24th, two second minute.
Uh, Member Ekstrom, I believe.
Are you good, Susan?
Yeah, I'm good. Oh, sorry.
All right. Let's move into public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes, and you will need to kind of step up in a, in a polite order. I can't see you or necessarily hear you. We will take comments until there are none left. When you are called, please state your name and your address for the record. And again, you'll have three minutes. And Member Johnson, would you be so kind as to time the three minutes?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Do I have someone stepping up for public comment? Second and final call on any public comment for the, for the last time. Okay. Hearing no public comment, we will move right into committee reports. First up is a chairperson report. And all I would like to report tonight is that I am incredibly proud of all of the work that is being done by our district staff and by our school committee in this, as we've said many times, unprecedented time. And I wanna give a specific call out, we will hear later, about the food service and all they are doing. And that program has been amazing, and they're getting increased in numbers every day that they're doing distributions. And those folks are putting themselves out there on the line each day to make sure that our students are fed. And we've been able to expand the program to include lunches and breakfast and weekend meals as well. So I just wanted to give that one shout out, and that is the only report that I have. Any comments on the chairperson's report?
Do we know how many lunches are actually being produced and how many are being taken? Meaning, is there a difference between the two?
That's an excellent question. I don't know if the superintendent can comment on that. I do not have numbers right now, but we can get those.
We can ask our food service director for the difference, if you're interested in that. But participation has been increasing daily. We've been about a 500 meal count at least per day, but that's, again, been increasing steadily, so that may, number may be much higher even as of today.
President, we're making 500, and they're all being taken?
That number is being taken. That's not the meals produced. That's how many people are actually picking up meals. But again, that number is a couple of days old now, and it was increasing by large quantities each day. Yeah. Okay.
Superintendent Harper, before we move into report, I just wanna make a quick announcement. There is a little bit of feedback and noise on the line. If folks who are listening could make sure they are muted, that would be helpful to improve the quality of the call. And now we'll move in, right into the superintendent's report.
Well, hi, everybody. It's always a little awkward to do reports by phone. We get to, can't see each other necessarily, but I just wanna appreciate all of you for your leadership in such an interesting time, we'll call it that. I also wanna thank the mayor for the leadership at the city level. This is first and foremost a public health emergency and situation. And so I really wanna start by thanking the city first responders, the emergency operations folks. There's an awful lot of coordinated work going on in the city, and the schools, of course, are stepping up to play our part in that while we are focusing on the remote learning and the needs of our students who are at home. But it is first and foremost a public health situation, and we, I wanna say at the outset that I thank everybody who is putting others' needs before their own by staying home, by really doing the selfless acts that you're doing. It's challenging. It's quite hard. It's hard if you have children at home, and it's, I think, hard on everyone in different ways. And many of us are touched personally by a loved one who's sick or something quite personal as a result of this public health situation. So I wanna thank everybody who's playing their part in different ways. My remarks, as far as the schools, will be very brief tonight because we have a lot on the agenda that I'll comment more on. In my remarks, I'd like to specifically thank my principals and administrators. This has been an around-the-clock effort, and we have today sent the committee a draft of our remote learning plan. The reason that was sent today and not with the typical 48 hours notice is because we had, we have been in ongoing negotiations and collaboration with parents and teachers and the Education Association. And we have moved forward so well that I wanted to share that with the committee, although it is still a draft, and we have another session scheduled tomorrow. And we believe that we will be able to launch this this week. And we are moving into Chromebook distribution later this week with a number of our students that have signed up for needing to borrow a Chromebook from the schools in order to access remote learning opportunities. I do wanna remind everyone that remote learning does not mean online learning, but having said that, it is important to access communication, and getting online is an important part of how we all communicate day to day. So I will just say that I'm very proud of our team. I'm very proud of food services. I'm very proud of custodians. I'm very proud of all of the staff, the admin assistants, the instructional assistants, the teachers, the administrators, our director of pupil services. This, I mean, I can't even name everybody, our tech department, who were working over the weekend to sanitize Chromebooks. And it's all hands on deck. And so I just want you to know that I am proud of the team. I'm proud of people pulling together in a difficult time. And while there might be people who say we should be doing more and faster, I would stand behind this team any day of the week, and I thank you for your support.
Chair Poiety, are you there?
I was muted. I'm here. Um, do we have any questions or comments for the superintendent at this time?
Just having joined the, having joined the, um, the team working on this, it's just been really impressive. Like, the amount of work is incredible. You're essentially having to rethink almost everything that we do in a different, from a different angle, and it's really, you know, not the best conditions to have to be hammering out these kind of complex agreements. But I think, wanna really applaud the superintendent, who's been working around the clock on, on that, and really impressed by the level of thinking and cooperation that's been applied by everybody involved in it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I just wanted to quickly comment. I know it's on the agenda for later, but I did get a chance this afternoon to read the very lengthy document and appendixes that came today, and I was just, as Glenn was, as saying, I'm impressed. I really thought it was, you know, I know it's a draft, but it was well thought out. It put the access of information at many different levels so that not only our students, but our educators are going to be able to stay engaged and stay in touch at a time when community outreach beyond education even is going to be so paramount. I was very pleased with what I was able to read today.
I think you're just showing off.
I like to read.
I'm just joking. That's great. And, yeah, yes. I read a draft over the weekend and was equally as impressed. I felt like the, the language was appropriate, and it was wide-ranging, and, yeah, very, very good. And we will talk about it some more. Any other comments?
Off-topic, Chair Poiety. I saw an email from Member Hollins that she was having difficulty accessing the meeting. Member Hollins, have you made it on yet?
Yes, I got on. Thank you, Glenn.
Oh, great.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Welcome, Member Hollins. So we're moving now into the subcommittee reports. Do any of the subcommittees have a report at this time?
None from Health and Safety or Policy. We decided to let this take the forefront of our administrative's time.
Understood. I think that's smart. What about Budget? There's, is there a report from Budget?
We have nothing. We've been working on all this other stuff.
Yes. Agreed. And I'm thinking the same is true for any of our representatives on other bodies, that there will not be reports for those either. So I think at this point, we can move into new business, and it looks like the superintendent is up again with the remote learning plan update.
Okay. So I'll just provide a couple of highlights, because this document hasn't been sent to parents yet. I'll just describe a couple of key provisions. The first is that the special education needs of our students was very important in designing our plan. And that might sound counterintuitive because it's a portion and not all of our students, but it was important to us that we had a plan that was equitable from the beginning for students that are high achieving, that students that require specialized services, students that require a 504 plan accommodation, or students that may not have internet access. So we sort of used a backwards design process, and I, I think that this plan fairly addresses ways to provide services to families that really need those supports for students right now, and continues to engage our students. I wanna thank teachers because short of this guidance, which was issued by the commissioner on March 26th, they, they've been hard at work engaging and providing learning opportunities. They weren't waiting for this learning plan to be finalized. And at many of our schools, teacher websites have been fully operationalized over the past week. So although it wasn't required that it be done by today, I think at most of our schools, we're at 90% of teachers have created a totally new way of reaching out to families, of posting things and of communicating, so that when we do go live, that will be one avenue in addition to ones that teachers are already using. Some other components of the plan include essentially memorandums of understanding with the Education Association. So we have thought out in each appendix the role of Unit A staff, which we commonly call teachers, the role of Unit C staff, who we refer to as instructional assistants, but there's actually many types of staff in there, including, for example, a physical therapy assistant, or a speech and language pathology assistant, or a building monitor. And what are those folks doing, and how do they support students, and how do we get them the technology they need to access that? We've also thought a lot about how to provide meaningful opportunities to families while not overwhelming them. We're hearing everything from families from, "We need a lot more structure and a lot more support," to, "We're totally overwhelmed in our personal situation." Perhaps we work in a medical field, and, and there's other pressing concerns in our families right now. And so we're really trying to balance the need to respect families' individual situations while implementing the commissioner's guidance, and really, most of all, our obligation to students, to connect them with learning. We know that schools are a safe place for our kids, and when schools are closed, we are working valiantly to stay connected to them. One aspect of the plan that I'm very proud of is that it allows us a platform for mental health and special education services, and that we've created a, a structure, some parental permissions, and a way to engage with families to provide necessary and critical services. So there are also appendices that have reference materials and support materials. The main thing we want families to know, when this is released, there will be a one-page parent guide that boils it down, makes it very clear. We don't expect every family to read a 50-page document, as much fun as that is. We want families to know we're there for them. We will provide support. Assignments will be credit, no-credit basis. We're asking students and families to engage with the schools, but if something is not working for them, to reach out, and we're here to support. And the message we want folks to know is that many of our educators are balancing these same demands. They have children at home. They may have multiple people trying to use one device in their own home. And so everyone's going to need to be flexible and do things a little differently, but we want to be there for our students, and we think that this plan accomplishes that. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. And do we have any questions from the school committee, comments from the school committee?
Have a comment?
Please.
Um, I just wanted to say, I wanted to ask, is the Appendix C, Unit C, Expectations Staff, a public document? Can I comment on that?
Um, they're all public in the sense that they have been sent to the school committee. There are no formalized agreements yet completed, so...
Okay. I was just going to say, non-specifically, that I read that and thought it was really well-done and well-thought-out. Um, I just, every question I had was answered when I read it. And I wanted to ask, in distributing the computers, were, were you able to also address staff that didn't have computers, or didn't have computers and also didn't have connectivity? And thank you. I see a lot of work, good work.
Um, thank you very much for those questions. I will pull up, um, our survey of students was completed for computer access, and we are finalizing with our tech director those numbers tonight because we have a few students who haven't yet completed it. We have over 800 responses, but not all students. And our staff surveys are complete, both teachers and instructional assistants. Over 40% of our instructional assistants did not have a dedicated computer at home, and over 20% of teachers had no dedicated computer at home, so they will have access to a Chromebook through our, our rollout plan. And then in addition, there was a full 20% of teachers and staff that do not have reliable internet at home. So these are some real challenges that have been addressed as we're rolling out our plan, but we are distributing Chromebooks to both students and staff that need them to be able to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a, one follow-up?
Please. Member Hollins, go ahead.
I really appreciate that level of detail in surveying. I wanted to ask, and it's because I don't know the answer, is a person prohibited from going into the school and working alone in their classroom?
Um, so the best way to answer that is through the governor's order on essential and non-essential staff, and the governor has made it quite clear that staff that are supporting remote learning are considered essential. So staff that have been in the buildings include some of our administrators over the weekend, some of our tech staff, and certainly our custodians as they maintain the buildings, and also prepare for this Chromebook rollout specifically. Having said that, we are following what the Board of Health and other public health officials have told us about entrance and exits from the building, and that has been advice to limit the number of individuals that come and go. And that's in coordination with some of the city public health folks as well. So we are coordinating, for example, students picked up instruments from some of our buildings, but we did that with one point of contact going into the building and then distributing instruments out to families on the exterior using safe distancing. So we're trying to limit the number of people working inside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about the remote learning plan?
Yes, it's Roxanne.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Um, yeah. I first wanna say, echo what Susan said. It's a, it's just an extraordinary feat that you've pulled off here to put this together, and I really appreciate it. I'm curious as to how, if I missed it in the document, I'm sorry, but how you're distributing these Chromebooks once you have them, or perhaps you now have them.
You did not miss it. That is the one appendix we haven't yet added because our tech director is working on that as we speak. And I am mindful that we're heading into a religious observation.
Yeah.
You know, this is a special time for many of us, for many different reasons, of different traditions. And, uh, you know, one of the reasons we moved tonight's meeting, in fact, to today. But we are finalizing that, and we expect to release it, the information for families tomorrow, about how to pick up their Chromebooks using safe distancing. And we expect that to happen this week, for the plan to start next week, is our goal. But again, we're bringing it here to the committee as one advisory step in that process.
Great. Thank you. Let us know if we can assist in that effort.
Thank you.
And I too... Thank you, Mayor.
I too would like to add what a great job I think that you have done, Superintendent. This is just fabulous.
Thank you, Member Wall.
Any other questions or comments regarding the remote learning plan? What I would like to do at this point is, I, I feel that, um, so yesterday, let me start this way. Yesterday, I went, I had a conversation with Liz LaFond at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees regarding the school committee's role in remote learning plans, and is it something that we should be endorsing with a vote? And it's the, it's the feeling of, it's the opinion of the Mass Association of School Committees that that sets a really, a dangerous precedent. There's, there's kind of a line where we are not actually going, we don't wanna be in a position where we are approving what the educational professionals in the district are putting together as a curriculum or a learning plan. And what makes sense in this situation is to, I think, look for a way to say that the school committee, with a motion, that the school committee has reviewed, as much as possible at this point, the remote learning plan, and that we are, I don't wanna say we're approving it, I don't wanna say we're endorsing it, but if another member has a better vocabulary than I do and would like to make a motion to that effect, I would entertain that at this point.
Could we talk about this before we make the motion?
We can. Well, what, no, we make the motion first, and then we discuss, and the motion either passes or fails.
Well, we're making a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Please. Member Ekstrom?
The school committee is encouraged by the remote learning plan as presented and looks forward to its application.
Okay. And I'm gonna pause for... Okay, and I'm going to pause for...
Take out the "as presented."
I'm going to pause for a second to make sure that Recording Secretary Farber has that written.
So, now can we discuss this?
Yeah, did someone second it?
I second, Weida Gardner.
Wonderful. Yes, let's move to discussion.
Can I be recognized?
Please, go ahead, Member Hollins.
Well, I don't know the source of your information, but I'd like to disagree with it.
I told you the source of my information, it's the Mass Association of School Committees.
Do you know who it was, just so I could ask?
I do, and I'd be happy to share the email with you. It was Liz LaFond.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to pull up our policy, but I'm trying to recall, but I'm pretty sure that school committees do have a responsibility to approve new programs, which is why we keep talking about the program that we want to open in Green River School. And I'm going to try to pull up the list of duties, but I think approving new programs is one of our duties, so I wouldn't say that. And secondly, because we're the school district that actually started the only virtual school, the first virtual school in the state, and it came in as a Greenfield Public School, we actually have a couple of supportive policies. One that I recently checked is one on how many hours would constitute a day, and I noticed in something I read that we were supposed to use, try to strive for 50%, but in our own policy right this minute, it says that we would consider 2.5 hours a day, and that was calculated based on instructional time of a half-day. But before we vote, I would just like the opportunity to pull up our two policies on approving new programs, and also the one on statutory duties, which I believe includes approving new programs. So, I'd just like a second before we vote. I'm pulling it up now, thank you.
Chair, I have something to say.
Please, Member Karen.
So, I did pull up school committee powers and duties.
Yeah.
It is BBA.
Yeah.
It's about 11 bullet points, but to be fair, we are, I'm trying to figure out if we actually fully adopted this policy. I know for sure we've done a first reading. I don't think we've fully adopted it yet, which is why the one on the website is not the current working of this language, so I'm just putting that out there.
But there is a current, there is a current policy, and until we change it, we have a policy that was...
That's what I'm saying, right. That's what I'm saying, Susan. I'm just saying, we've done a first reading of this policy. I can't remember if we've done a second reading. That's all I'm saying. The, it says that we are in charge of setting policies for educational, committee is responsible for establishing educational goals and policies consistent with requirements of law. And then, it goes on to say, our next goal, number six, is district schools and programs. And it says, the committee is responsible for reviewing and approving district schools or demonstration programs, including district magnet charter, virtual innovation, regional educational collaborative schools.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the only two things that talk about in this policy. I haven't pulled any others up yet, are duty of approving educational plans. I don't know, I did not write this policy, I was not here when it was approved. It was adopted in 2016, this one. I'm trying to remember our conversations about this policy many months ago. But I don't think that the intent of this was that we would approve every major curriculum change or situation like that. I'm not saying we shouldn't bother to approve this one, and I understand where Liz was coming from, and she is the person, our contact with MASC for all of our policy rewriting. So, I hesitate to question her very knowledgeable opinion. I think this was meant if we were going to start brand-new programs, or create regional schools, or create innovation schools. That's all.
I have a comment.
I'm not sure who that was, is that Glenn?
I did, but someone else simultaneously also had a comment.
Go ahead, Member Johnson, and then whoever was next can go after that.
Okay. Well, just to be clear, what we have in front of us is not finalized, so there wouldn't be an opportunity for us to vote as a committee to approve this plan as it is anyway. It hasn't been finalized, so we're not really in that position tonight to do that. I think that there is time for folks to delve a little more into this, and whether it's our role or not. I can see some arguments, on the other hand, that I think we've been intentionally been advised not to really do this as a standard educational program or curriculum, that, so it's a little bit different than setting up a virtual school, because we're explicitly not doing that. So, I guess I would just suggest that maybe we go ahead, and I think a lot of us have voiced support for the general direction this is going in, and then go back to the, go back and study the issue. People can reach out to Liz if they have follow-up questions from what Amy discussed with her, and then we can discuss whether or not we need to vote at the next meeting.
Could I respond?
I appreciate that. Who was next?
Member Extrem.
Go ahead, please, Member Extrem.
So, I agree with Katie in that the program is an interpretation of something that is a new program, like an alternative school, or whatever the case may be. What we're talking about is not a new program, we're talking about a different form of delivery. It's the same, the attempt is being made to provide a similar, and I say similar because it's not going to be exactly the same education as we would in the school, but it's not a different education program. It's the, the delivery of services is different.
I appreciate that, thank you. Any other comments?
This is the mayor, but I think Susan, I think Member Hollins wanted to comment on Glenn's comment before me, so I'm happy to defer to her until I comment.
Okay, Member Hollins, please.
I just wanted to say that my mention of the virtual school was, had nothing to do with the curriculum we're talking about, and whether we endorse it or approve it or whatever. I just mentioned that we happen to have a policy in place saying that two and a half hours is considered a day, but that's a different topic. On the topic of curriculum, I wasn't suggesting we not approve it, I was just disagreeing that the school committee doesn't, does not have a role in approving new curriculum. I think there is an approval, and I think many superintendents would want a vote of approval, and then even if it's in an initial stage of planning, because whether it's in the delivery or the materials, it's new. But if she doesn't want that, that's okay, we're supportive of it one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor, Weida Gardner, please.
Sure. This is a lot to unpack here. I'm interested in what Member Johnson had to say, that it is a draft plan, I think that's what you were implying. But first question, I haven't commented yet either, so I'm not done after the answer. First question is, who actually, if this is a draft plan, who's responsible for seeing that it is the plan in place that we use to go forward? Superintendent, do you have the answer to that? Who has the answer to that?
Please, Superintendent Harper, go ahead. Hello? Is she there, Superintendent Harper?
Oh, boy.
She may have gotten dropped, but I might be able to provide a little bit of assistance with that.
Please, go ahead, Member Extrem.
Right now, we are talking with the GEA, and the plan is sort of being looked at at the same time as the MOU. So, I don't know that there's an approval process so much as a meeting of the minds and agreeing that yes, this is what we should do going forward, and it can be changed as time goes by.
Okay. May I make one more quick comment?
Go ahead, Member Hollins, please.
I just want to say that included in this detailed, comprehensive plan is some expenditure of money, probably, for equipment that we didn't plan for, probably. And I think at each level, an approval to the mayor's question is important. Thank you.
I have a comment.
So, well...
Go ahead, Member Weida Gardner, and then Member Johnson.
Laurie, go ahead.
I think I have the floor.
You do, I forgot, yep.
So, I understand, and I appreciate all the intricacies here. I will say, as I think Superintendent Hollins would agree, having been in the trenches now for a couple of weeks, that nothing that we've ever done before is the same as what we are doing now. And I think if I've been reading all of, even from the Department of Ed, the guidelines and whatnot, that this is new territory for everyone. So, I'm not sure any policy that we have in place right now would be, would be the one that we could point to that said, yes, we have the authority to do this, or no, we don't have the authority to do this, or something in between. So, I guess I would just say that it is a program, so we do have some authority there. The other thing I would say is, it has shown us that we need to be prepared for something like this happening. You know, we didn't expect this, we didn't want it, it's way worse and more complicated than any of us ever thought we'd be dealing with. Believe me, I can appreciate that. But nevertheless, to have a remote learning plan slash program, whether it's one that we, it's not a curriculum per se, but whether it's one that we feel is important to adopt, I think the school committee has a perfectly reasonable, we're not saying you have to do this, that, or the other kind of instruction in it, to Ms. LaFond's point. We are saying, this is a plan that meets what we think the criteria for remote learning is. So, I would just simply say that at the point at which we feel like we have a plan that everyone agrees on, that it's totally appropriate for us to approve the work that's been done to set it up, and it is what we have as a remote learning plan, not a virtual school, et cetera, et cetera, it's just a remote learning plan. So, that's, that's just my two cents worth, and I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Mayor Weida Gardner. How about Member Johnson, please?
Just concerned that we may not have Superintendent Harper on the phone, and I...
I think that's correct.
That's, I think that's pretty essential for this discussion. She's the one who's had her, you know, nose in this and studying it and driving the process.
Yep.
Could we take five minutes and try to address the issue of getting her on the call?
Yep, I'm waiting for her to log back in. I did try to communicate with her by text. I know she's been having a little bit of trouble with the Internet at her residence, and that is likely what is happening right now, is that she's been just dropped from the call and is waiting for her Internet to come back. With that said, and hearing, you know, first of all, I appreciate everyone's comments. I think everyone's coming from a very thoughtful place, and everyone's coming from a very supportive place for our district, and our staff, and students, and that's where we want to be. I am also hearing that, you know, from all these comments, that perhaps any sort of vote is premature at this time, considering we haven't reached agreement with the GEA, and we have not actually finalized this plan. So, perhaps we table the motion and move forward with the rest of the agenda.
I would agree.
I think Member Extrem's motion, as stated, may be good for us to go with, but that doesn't preclude us from taking it, making another motion to approve a plan in the future.
That's a good point, Glenn. I'm wondering, Susan Farber, would you mind reading back the motion again for us?
I can do that. That the school committee is encouraged by the remote learning plan as presented, and look forward to its application.
I think you make a real, thank you, I think you make a really good point, Member Johnson, that it feels like this is a vote that we can move forward with if people feel that's what we want to do. And I would entertain further discussion, or I would entertain someone calling the question as well.
Would you just repeat the motion, please?
Yes. That the school committee is encouraged by the remote learning plan as presented, and look forward to its application.
I call the question.
Okay, the mayor has called the question, which means we move right to a vote without further discussion. Member Johnson, would you be so kind as to do a roll call vote for us, please?
I think we have to have a vote on whether to call the question first.
Oh, you're correct. You are absolutely correct.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Does that one, I can't remember if that one needs a second.
I don't think it does.
It does, yes, it does.
It does? Okay, go ahead. Anyone want to call the question, or anyone want a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay.
Second from Member Extrem? Okay.
So, we're voting on whether or not we can move to a vote on the motion? We're not voting on the motion yet.
That's right. Did I get that right, Member Extrem, that you were seconding?
Yes, I already did.
Okay, great. All right, Member Karen? Member Karen, are you on mute?
It looks like she just got dropped from the call.
I'm back on, I got dropped, but I got back.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay. Vice Chair Extrem, you seconded, I guess that's a yes.
I am.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson? Yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Okay, Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weida Gardner?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we vote on the main motion?
Correct.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member, Mayor Weida Gardner?
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Awesome. Wonderful work, folks. I really appreciate that. I know the superintendent, when she's able to log back in, will appreciate that. She is not yet back with us. But we will move, at this point, into April vacation. And someone else besides me may have to pull up the information that Lori sent just a little bit before the meeting. Does anyone else have that besides me? Oh, I may be able to grab it.
Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
She's back.
It's like a Verizon commercial, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, my gosh.
So, we have passed while you were, were you there the whole time, or you were gone?
It kicked me out for quite a while, but I did hear, I made several attempts, I was just talking to myself.
We did approve...
I could hear more than you could.
Okay, we did approve the motion regarding the remote learning plan, and encouraging it to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Poiroti, Susan Farber, if I can jump in here, turn for a public service request. There are about five people who are in this meeting who are not muted. In particular, there's someone whose phone number ends in 13, there's a lot of background noise that makes it difficult to hear. And I'm wondering if members... it difficult to hear. And I'm wondering if members who have not yet renamed their accounts to do this, or it was easier to see people speaking.
So there were questions for people to mute their lines?
People who are attending who are not necessarily school committee members.
Yes.
I can see the new people wanting to keep their audio on.
Yep, so I will put, I will put the request out again, that if you are just listening in, you are welcome to do so. This is a public meeting, but we do ask that you mute your line if you are not a school committee member, or you're not currently speaking. And hopefully that will help the call quality.
And whoever is the tech host to do that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Whoever is the tech host has the power to do that.
Oh, that would be, that would be Nick. Yep, Nick from GCTV, if you can hear us, we're having some problems with call quality because things are not muted. Are you able to help us with that?
And it's especially the phone number ending in 13.
Phone number ending in 13, okay. Okay, thank you. So if phone number ending in 13, we can't identify who you are, but if you could mute your line, that would be super helpful. Okay.
Now I have to try and remember my phone number.
Talk again, Susan Ekstrom. I don't think it was you.
Well, then I muted myself, and then I muted myself. Now I have to try and remember my phone number.
Oh, it is you with the background noise.
I've been on mute. All right, so I'll hit the mute again.
Okay, hopefully that will improve it. So we're moving on to April vacation, and I do have, I did pull up the information that was calculated this afternoon. So there's a, there's a, Superintendent Harper, you're going to have to interrupt me if I get this wrong, but I don't believe there is firm guidance from the state regarding whether or not to keep our April vacation, or to cancel it, or not cancel, but just continue instruction over that time, that they've kind of left it up to the local districts. Is that correct?
That's entirely correct. The guidance from the commissioner-
Wow, that never happens.
No, the guidance from the commissioner is very, very clear that this is a local decision. And it, I'm looking at it, and it says directly, we've received questions about whether school districts should keep their planned April vacation, or use that week to continue the remote learning plan that is going into place. This is a local decision, and that is bolded.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you for that clarification. So I do have the information that a request was made today for, specifically for the district to calculate what would happen if we continued to work through the April vacation, continued to have instruction through the April vacation, and that would be, with the exception of Monday, which is a state holiday, so you're talking about instruction days on Tuesday through Friday of that week. The current last day of the school year for Greenfield Public Schools is June 17. If four days are worked in April, that takes four days off from that June 17 date, putting us at Thursday, June 11, as the last day of instruction, the last day of school. So we would need to, as a committee, have a motion related to this, and then a second, and then discussion.
So moved.
That's a motion from the mayor, and do I have a second?
Second.
That was Member Wall. Any discussion of this?
Chair, could I speak to this?
Please, absolutely.
Farber, could someone repeat that motion?
Sure. The motion is to work four days in April that are currently scheduled for the April break. That takes four days off at the end of the school year, putting the last day of school as June 11.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Superintendent Harper.
So I just wanted to speak to this. This question is obviously timely, because the April vacation would otherwise begin the week of April 20th. And, you know, I think that there's a tremendous amount of momentum going into these learning plans and implementing them. And for many of our students, this is an opportunity to get the ball rolling, and for families to get in the swing of using the remote learning plan, and for educators as well. I think that by June, we are optimistic that the public health situation is better, and hopeful that families might better be able to enjoy a vacation at that time, as well as educators. And either way, an earlier ending of the school year would be beneficial for the start of the extended school year program. So when the school year ends, obviously, that dictates when we can begin planning extended school year services, and there would be an obvious benefit in this particular year, if schools were resuming soon, to be able to initiate extended school year services sooner than later, to help make, make up for students that may need additional support.
Thank you, that's helpful background information. Further discussion, please?
Yes, this is Roxanne, could I comment?
Please.
I, I made that motion as quickly as I did, because that's exactly what I wanted to hear. So thank you, Superintendent. And I wasn't coached, let me tell you that. So I think it's important that, because we've been under such extraordinary stress with regard, and I, I guess, I guess I failed, not only as a school committee member, but as a mayor, regarding remote learning, and why aren't we, you know, the same as Newton or wherever. So I think you're right, absolutely spot on, Superintendent Harper, that let's not, let's not do anything to interrupt that momentum. And yes, there's going to be people who complain, but I can't for the life of me understand why, because, because nobody's going anywhere on April vacation. So I, I heartily endorse that. What I, the only thing I have to ask is, if you say your comments about the extended learning program, the school year would start sooner, when, and maybe that's what you said, I, maybe I misunderstood, but if, when would that be?
Well, it's too soon to have set the summer extended school year program, but obviously, so we haven't set the start for what most people call summer school officially as our extended school year program, and then our Title I program. We have a couple different options, but they're, they're summer learning programs. But obviously, there's generally a week or so between when school gets out and when those begin. And so school getting out a little earlier for all students means that we would begin those summer programs somewhat earlier, which has, has some benefit as well.
Okay, okay, that's, that's a good, good answer. My grandchildren have benefited greatly from extended school year slash summer school program, so I just wasn't clear on the timing of that, so that's all.
Thank you. I will say, too, that many teachers are in support of this, that, you know, not a formal survey, but informally and in conversation with the Greenfield Education Association and their polling of members. I think, I think teachers are very supportive of trying to get students in a good place right now, and that's their priority.
And, and I think it behooves us as a community to not encourage people to go anywhere for vacations, so why not make it school learning time?
Thank you, Member Wall. I couldn't have said it better. Any other discussions?
I have a question, give me a second.
I'm not sure who either of those people were.
Go ahead, Susan Hollins, go ahead, I'll go next.
Oh, I wanted to say quickly, I support the superintendent, her reasoning about getting a consistent plan, I support everything she said, but I do have a question, and it may not be for tonight. It's how does the new arrangement fit into our planned budget and contracts for 180 days of instructional time? That's all, I don't need an answer, I just like to make sure we don't lose track of, of that. Thank you.
Steve, our business manager's on the line, but just generally speaking, what we're doing is we're taking four instructional days that have already been annualized into our teachers' salaries, for example, in April, and, sorry, and the vacation days that are in April, and moving them to workdays in April. So we're simply moving four workdays, and then getting out somewhat earlier. And the commissioner's guidance is very clear around this, that districts will not be required to go beyond it, so we are being very consistent with the guidance if the committee supports this vote tonight.
Do you want me to chime in?
Please, Steve, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, as long, as long as we, not so much the Unit A folks, but it's the hourly folks that I would have been concerned about, but as long as we don't go beyond, as long as we're adding now and then taking off at the end, we'll be fine with the total number of work hours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion, questions, comments?
I have a comment. It's, I support this, I'm fine with it. I just, my head keeps going to our kids with really high needs, or maybe in unsafe situations, and my head goes to if we take those four days off, and we are allowed to go back to school on May 4th, that is less time with them for us to be able to be sure they're safe. I know it's like not the largest concern of ours at the moment, but it feels really worrisome to me that we may not get to see them at all till September. And I just, I want as much time with them in a classroom, so that we can be keeping an eye on some of these kids in the district are not safe right now. And we have no way to communicate with them except in person, once school restarts. It's not, the brain just keeps circling this fear of mine, so I just thought I'd put it out there.
Well said, I appreciate that, thank you. Other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, so I think we can move to a vote. Member Johnson, would you be so kind as to do the roll call vote?
Absolutely. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member, Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you. Wow, that's excellent. Okay, so we're moving on to new business item C, voting on the 2020, 2021 lunch prices. I believe we all have some information about this from the business manager, and I'm wondering, Steve, if you could just give us an overview of this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, the, the lunch prices, we're asking for an increase, and that's due to the fact that we're required by federal guidelines to essentially raise the prices every year, so that we're in line and we maintain our reimbursement. The increase is fairly modest, but it's in line with what we thought was going to happen, and as well as in line with what the federal government says we have to do.
Perfect.
Chair?
I would entertain a motion to approve the increase. Hello?
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Can you, our food service director is also on the line, I just wanted to give her a chance to add anything, if there's anything further she wants to weigh in with.
Oh, please, Eliza, I did not know you were on the line. Please, would you like to add anything?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Eliza. So as Steve said, the USDA will require us to raise our price. We are currently at the required price, and I recommend a 25 cent increase. That makes it easier when parents are figuring out how much to put on their lunch accounts, or when the cashiers are making change at the register. And it's just easier to wrap your mind around that difference, and it also keeps us from having to change the price again next year, because the USDA raises that requirement every year. About 2% plus the Consumer Price Index is what they base it on. So we would be expected to raise it about 11 cents. And so I looked at past years, and it does not seem to have affected the participation. So, does anyone have any questions?
Sure, any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, yes.
I, I would just like to ask if there's a document, specific document with the new prices, or could we just read the new prices from this to that into the record, since we're online and we, we're going to take a vote about money?
Thank you. So the current prices are, elementary school is $2.75, middle school is $3, and the high school is $3.25. The proposed price would be $3 for elementary school, $3.25 for the middle school, and $3.50 for the high school.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Also, just wanted to say that our participation is steadily increasing for the school closure meal service, and the team is just doing an amazing job.
I don't know if you were on, Eliza, at the beginning of the call, but we, we did talk a little bit about how successful that program has been, and certainly how amazing your staff has been at stepping up and rising to the challenge of putting that program into place, and then very quickly growing it to more distribution at more sites. I just really want to make sure that your staff gets the support and the commendation they deserve from the school committee for doing such a great job, and in such an important role for the district. So thank you, and please thank your staff for us.
Thank you so much.
Chair Poiety, may I ask one other question?
Please.
Could you tell us if we have any schools where every single student gets free lunch? Thank you.
Yes, yes, we do. Excuse me. AEL is, and Newton Elementary School and Federal Street are all free for lunch and breakfast. Every single school has free breakfast across the district.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will move into a roll call vote. Member Johnson, if you would be so kind?
I would be so kind.
This is Susan Farber, we don't yet have a motion on the floor.
Oh, did we not do a-
Correct.
I can make a motion.
Great.
Member Hollins, please.
To support the new school meal, school lunch prices as recommended by the administration, an increase of 25 cents.
I'll second. Second from Member Johnson. And thank you, Susan Farber, you always keep us right in task. Any further discussion regarding this? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
No, I'm totally muted. I, I responded, no one said anything. I said yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Wonderful. Thank you all for that. Okay, we are now moving forward to Item D, the vacancy for Director of Pupil Services. Okay, we are now moving forward to Item D, the vacancy for Director of Pupil Services. So currently, a little introduction, unless Superintendent Harper, do you want to start and I can fill in after, or do you want me to introduce?
You can begin.
Okay, so we currently have an interim Director of Pupil Services, which is Dr. Janet Dickinson. She is not able to be with us on Tuesday nights due to a scheduling conflict, and, so she is not on the line this evening. In, in discussing kind of what is happening with this position and having it interim, in an interim role, we kind of, the Superintendent and I kind of spoke about what to do with this, and the way I think it makes sense in the current situation is to leave it as interim and prepare to revisit that once we are no longer in the pandemic, pandemic situation that we're currently in. It does not seem like the district is in a position right now to undertake a search for this job. And I would leave it to Superintendent Harper, if you have anything else to add, or did I miss anything?
Do you want a motion?
I don't know if we need a motion.
Her last, the last motion was time limited, I believe.
Oh, was it?
I don't remember exactly, but I think it was for a specific period of time that ended.
I think we need Superintendent and Harper.
She may have gotten dropped from the call again, let me check. I'm cur, I'm soon going to know all of the last two digits of everyone's phone number.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Hello?
Oh my, golly, golly.
So perhaps you missed, I don't know if you heard, did you drop? Okay, would you want to add anything to that? And we couldn't remember if there's a, the time limit on the interim appointment, and if we needed to have a motion to extend that?
So a motion would be very helpful. What I'd like to say is that this has been an extraordinary time, and some other normal routine matters have been put on hold, and, you know, we were anticipating a posting and moving forward with a process like that for this vacancy. Dr. Dickinson has done a tremendous job. We are short-staffed in this area, there is no Assistant Director because Dr. Dickinson stepped in from the Assistant Director role, and her position has not been backfilled. And she and I worked, I don't know, maybe 20 hours just this past weekend alone, that's just an indication of the level of commitment that she's had. So I just would like to ask that the committee affirm her continuing in an interim role until such time that the committee can take this up and then make any further recommendations, because we've been so focused on putting a remote learning plan in place.
Thank you. So would anyone like to, any of the school committee members like to make a motion?
I can make one if you like.
Please.
To extend Dr. Janet Dickinson's interim appointment as Administrator of Special Education until such time the school committee picks up the recruit, recruitment for a permanent position.
Thank you, do we have a second? That was Member Johnson with the second. Susan Farber, do you have what you need?
I do, I'm wondering, Administrator of Special Education is not exactly the title.
Correct, Director of Pupil Services, please.
Member Hollins, you accept that as a friendly amendment, I assume? As a second, I accept it.
Okay, we'll move forward with any further discussion? Okay, so let's do a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? We seem to have lost Member Hollins. Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
All right, with six yeses and one not on the call anymore, we have a motion that carries.
I'm, I'm on, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
It's unanimous.
Okay, so that, it concludes the public portion of our meeting, and I appreciate everyone who has joined us, we've had a number of additional folks on the call with us, and I appreciate people who are engaged and listening in and, and participating in that way in what the school committee is doing. We value your support and your feedback, and we welcome it through email at any time. We will not be returning to a public session after our executive session, so I think I could... I'm sorry?
If we need to vote on something, we'll need to do it in public session.
I guess we don't need to vote on something, do we?
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
Okay, so we may, oh geez, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I wonder if, I wonder if we should, so let's chat about this for a second before we go into executive session, I wonder if we can vote next Tuesday? We've already posted this exact meeting with the exact agenda for next Tuesday, the 14th at seven, at 6:00 PM with the exact agenda, in anticipation, we would need to come back. Is that, does that make sense? I'm open to suggestions, we can come back later after we've discussed, or we could postpone any public votes until next Tuesday.
So here's my question.
Please.
If something is not listed under new business, can it still be discussed?
What is it?
I have a similar question.
One of the things that we need to vote on this evening is important for employees, and if we have a public discussion now about that, which I suspect we may be able to unless there are things that I don't know, even though it isn't listed, can it be discussed as new business?
No, it shouldn't, it, nobody knows what you're talking about, so we can't confirm if it should be discussed publicly.
I have a, I have a process proposal.
Please.
I believe that this phone line will be available to us to come back to, so I think we just do, like, we're leaving one room and coming back to another, we hang up, and then we call back in later. And folks who are at home who, who want to wait and, you know, participate, they can stay on the line as they would in a, in a, in a public meeting. If not, the recording will be available after the fact.
I think that's a good idea.
I have no objection to that at all, thank you, Member Johnson. Does anyone have an objection to that? Okay, so what we need at this point is a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
And a second.
What, second?
Oh, thank you. Executive session for Mass General Law 30A, subsection 21, 2, 3, and 6. Two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
That's the mayor, and a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who that was.
Wall.
Jean.
Thank you, Jean. And a roll call vote, please, Member Johnson.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
And, and where is the number for the?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to find it, too.
So the number for the exec, so for the public who may still be listening, we do intend to come back to this line and this conference call once we're done with our executive session. We are returning at 8:54 PM to the public session of the school committee meeting for Tuesday, April 7th. We have finished our executive session, and our only business remaining here in the public session, am I right, is to actually adjourn the meeting? Or are we taking a vote?
We have to take a vote publicly.
We are doing a vote publicly, and are we doing all of the votes that we did in executive session publicly?
Yes.
Okay. Here we go. Everybody ready? So, the following will be voted on in public session related to compensation for district employees. We have, first on the docket is Unit C employees. We will then deal with other hourly contractual and non-union employees, and then we will deal with food service employees. Do I have that correct, Susan Farber? Can you verify for me that those are the three votes we took related to compensation?
Unit C is first, second, contract hourly and non-union employees, and third, food service employees.
Wonderful, and if I can, I would actually like Susan, who's our recording secretary, to read the motion, followed by a so moved from the, a school committee member, and then a second from a school committee member, and then we will have a re, a roll call vote from Secretary Johnson. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Susan, could you read the Unit C motion, please?
Yes. Motion is to compensate members of Unit C through the duration of the COVID-related school closure in accordance with the guidelines of the remote learning plan.
Thank you, and do I have a so moved on that?
So moved.
And, and a second?
Second.
So we have a so moved from Katie Karen, and a second from Member Hollins, and a roll call vote, please, Member Johnson.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall? We may have lost Member Wall.
Yeah, I don't see her on the line.
Mayor Weidergardner? We have lost Mayor Weidergardner perhaps, but we have five yeses, so the motion carries.
Excellent, thank you. And now, can, Susan, if you could read the hourly contractual non-union employees motion, please?
The motion is, effective April 6th, 2020, all contract employees, hourly employees, and non-union employees will be paid as per current contract with work hours and assignments as defined by the Superintendent or designee.
So moved.
That was Katie Karen, and a second?
Second.
Second.
I have no idea who, Member Ekstrom, I believe that was, and a roll call vote, please, Member Johnson.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall, are you here? Mayor Weidergardner, are you here? Five yeses, the motion carries.
Okay, and a final reading, recording Secretary Farber, please, for the food service workers.
The motion is to compensate food service workers who are preparing or providing meals through the duration of the COVID-related school closures at time and a half.
So moved.
That was Member Karen, and a second, and that was Member Hollins, and a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall, are you here?
Yes.
All right, and that's a yes vote.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
She is not here.
Not here, we have six yeses, the motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you all for your excellent work on these, those, that was the necessary follow-up from our executive session. I would entertain at this point a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second, don't all jump at once. And a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
I'm sorry?
You said it's the same agenda, so my question is, do you adjourn, or do you adjourn to a time certain with the same agenda so you don't have to post everything again?
It's already posted, so we're good, yeah. We're going to just use the same agenda again. And I think the only things we would need to address are actually our executive session items, and we have plenty of time to update, so it's not a big deal to update our agenda for, for Tuesday. But thank you for that.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Uh, yes, am I, yes, I'm yapping, I'm saying yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner, are you here? Uh, we have six yeses, the motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you all again for your good work, thank you to all the public that was engaged, we are adjourned, and everyone have a great week.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful out there.